I have two hands to hold it.
Okay, today is March 21st, 2013. We're at the Town and Leeds Planning Commission meeting. It's 12:04 and we're going to have a roll call.
Peter Orgerella.
Daryl Lyo.
Danielle Sterling.
Hi.
Oh, thanks.
Is this the city office?
Yes, it is.
Uh-huh.
Bob is right up there.
Up here?
No, right inside this window. Just come on in. And then just right up the stairs from that window.
Thank you very much.
I guess we need to have the pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, let's see, is there any declaration?
Have you got that recorder going?
Yeah, I do. Uh-huh. Are there any declarations of abstentions or conflicts? Yeah, I know. Okay, I need a motion for consent agenda for today's, uh, March 21st.
I, I move to approve the consent agenda for today.
Um, favor?
Aye.
Okay, any announcements? There's still planning commission openings, um, available if you know of anyone. There's no public hearings, no action items. We'll move on to our discussion items, which is review of Sunrise Engineering of the Leeds Master Road Plan and zoning. Mrs. Russ, I never got your last name.
It's Funk, Russ.
Russ Funk from Sunrise Engineering.
Russ is good.
That's good. Okay, the first thing I want to make sure that we do is, um, most of the things that I've seen do not have signatures on them. Bob has a particular, what was that called up there? Do you remember what I just gave to him?
Yeah, that was the capital facility plan, uh, for the town. So it, it has an ordinance number on it, but no signature on the copy that we have, so I don't know.
Is that what he gave back to you?
Uh, no, I brought two copies. So this is another copy.
And this map is included in this, which does not have a signature.
It's actually not true. This, so the capital facility plan, it was, it's got an ordinance number of 2006.
Okay.
The current copy of the master plan that we have was, has a 2007 number, but it was never finished, and that map is associated with the 2007 master plan.
Okay.
So, but, but most of the roads that you see on that map, uh, many of the roads, I should say, are also included in the capital facility plan. So there was probably a prior version or something that this was based on.
Okay, so number one, I want to make sure what, which map has actually been adopted. Okay, and having said that, um, once we figure out which map has been adopted, we'll, we'll be able to see what we're working with. But since they have brought this map, I think that what we need to do is start really, uh, looking into what changes we need to make. And if you have any, um, we're just gonna write on that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's great. I, if I may, just, you know, the typical process for coming up with a road master plan is, is, uh, it's, it's based on, uh, well, I mean, I'm gonna back up, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Generally, so municipality will have a general plan. That general plan is used to kind of provide direction to the town, what direction you want to go in the future, what, and how you'd like to see the town grow. That's been taken and put into zoning, and then, um, the zoning map is kind of the basis for the road master plan. So you would take the existing zoning, which there's actually some confusion on what the current zoning is, when it's been adopted as well, so you might zone it back home. And then, and then you'll use that zoning map and break it down into, um, where you're expecting growth to go, the number of trips, car trips and stuff like that. And then ultimately, your road is designed, I mean, if I'm gonna break it down real simply, you want to have a route in and out of every place, and then you just want to make sure that your roads are sized and the number of trips that you're expecting. So it's kind of to go in and just say, "Man, nice town road out here." I mean, there's a, there's a basis for it, and that's the plan. Does that make sense?
Do you know of a water notebook?
I've got a, I've got an old map, but it's different than the one on the wall. I don't know if the one on the wall was adopted, I don't know if this one was adopted.
The one that you gave was tabled, it was later passed, it was, it was in 2007, too.
And is there a map?
Yeah, that same map that you had before.
Okay.
So, let's see where it was signed.
Okay, so, okay. So, I'm gonna process and give this back to you. So that's your, and it was signed.
It was signed.
It was signed. Well, actually, you know what? Uh, Bob, it wasn't signed.
Wasn't?
No. Look.
Oh, there were signatures at the back, weren't there?
Yeah, but this, this is not the same as this. They're two different things. Roadways Capital Facility Plan was never signed.
Okay. I just saw the last four pages.
Do you have some sticky?
Oh, this is...
This is a different, um, number, and so your ordinances, your ordinance number is different. So you, you have, if you have two different ordinances, you have to have two different signatures. You can't.
Well, I could have both my capital facility plan and then a separate one by itself, that's kind of...
Right.
The plan's broken into a capital facility plan and an impact fee analysis.
I think that's what you're writing on there. Is that, uh, where your pen is? Yeah, impact fee.
This? No, this is my, this is my paper.
This is my copy. I was only taking anything out of the book, but yeah, there's, so you're gonna have a capital facility plan and an impact fee analysis in that, and apparently there's an ordinance for both or something.
But it doesn't look like it was signed.
Well, this, this one was.
This one was not, but this one was. So everything in here is not, uh, we can't use it. So I'm just gonna go like that because it shouldn't really be in here since it's not signed. But, um, the one thing about this is the, the actual roadway map that was adopted, which is quite interesting map. I'm not quite sure that this that was adopted, where this came from, because this right here is not on here.
Yeah, this, this came from the map in the mast, the road master plan, this one.
Okay.
So there's two different documents, the capital facility plans, apparently the analysis, and also this master plan, which I don't have.
Could you, can you, is this, would this be in here too? 2007, the Leeds Master Road?
Uh, I don't know, I'd have to look. But they forwarded that one to 2007, and when you got your right hand, said it was tabled.
Okay, let's see, would it be?
It's the one with the impact fees.
I'm gonna let you look at that.
So this is the one that this...
I want to just find the, the newest...
This is the master plan, and this is the one that we based this map off of.
Okay, but this is from 2005.
I know that it's on the back.
Right, I just want to make sure it's adopted. I want to see the map that was actually adopted, because I know that there's been questions, um, by who put this in or where. Okay, so... Okay, so it's signed, that's a good thing. Okay. So at least we have something to start with that we actually know was adopted, and that's my whole intent and purpose, is to figure out where we're starting from.
And so this was taken from this?
Um, well, yeah, I mean, this, these appear to be the same map to me, so.
When was that made?
2007.
My version must have just been prior to when that was signed, something, somebody gave us it.
It looks like it was cut and pasted, I'm not quite sure, um... Yeah.
That's just to, that's just to save on costs, probably, if it were redone.
Where's the...
It's probably in here.
Go ahead. Okay, so, um, at this point, now we know what we actually...
This is that map, if you look in the paper, it says a flat.
Okay.
So they just, they just dated it, rebated it, to the date that it passed.
Okay, all right, so now we know what we're working with. At this point, I know that, um, the zoning is a possibility, but the bottom line is, we've had for the last year, a tremendous amount of problems with the town and the planning commission putting roads through private property. And my first intent and purpose is to make sure that we are not infringing on people's rights. No matter if we have, as a planning commission, the right to create this plan, we don't have the right to infringe on people's property and then have somebody hold it against you. So I think first and foremost, what we need to do is look through and, um, kind of, first of all, see which ones are actually through private property and which ones are actually our roads. Do you have any way of actually knowing which ones are dedicated roads?
Yeah.
Are the green ones the proposed, proposed future plan? I mean, there's a few there.
Well, we can just, we can get a dog one, they're all controlled. Solid ones are already in that.
Okay.
Okay.
But that's, and that was just from looking at the aerial and writing them on there. The, the way to do it is to, is to get, um, one of the recorder's office or, or look at the flats and see what's actually being reported and dedicated.
Okay.
Yeah, the county would have some of them.
So you would go to county, they could give us a flat?
Yeah, they should have, yeah, they should have the, the map, they should have the date of the, the date of the sale.
Okay, so... So which office would I go to?
It's the Washington County Recorder's Office.
Sure, she looks like...
Yeah.
The downstairs one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the recorder's office, and then what is that map for?
Um, they should just have some...
They've got some long walls, and you can just go pick what you want off of them all.
Yeah, they're, they're fairly helpful down there.
They are.
Is it a road flat map? Can you just get like...
No, it's, it's a flat map. It shows all the parcels, but it, because it kind of reflects their, their... You can also get online, and generally, we've got it all shown online, go to Washington County Recorder's Office.
Oh, young boy. How you doing?
Thanks for coming. All right.
Save your seat.
If there's a possibility and I can get that on a PDF file, can I send it over to you? And then I just want a map of the dedicated roads, so that way I'll start like that.
Okay, we can, I mean, we could, we could, we could go get you a map to get the roads.
How much does that cost?
I, I didn't want to get this together as much. I'm working online. Always put this together, but depending on the amount of research that goes into it, it's...
Okay, so I can probably get a PDF file.
Sure, sure.
And then you'll get that one.
And then I'll, what's your email?
This is up on top, too. I think it's all there.
No, actually, mine's all in here. I don't know who's got this. I think that's Angie's.
I think it is.
Oh, thank you.
Not all you need, uh...
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so this is my intent and purpose. What I want to do is, number one, we've already figured out which plan has actually been adopted. Number two, I think what we need to do is figure out which roads are actually dedicated. And then what we can do is, I know that there's quite a few different zoning things we need to go over, and at one time, the last planning commission had every single planning commission person take a zone, and like, for instance, this area is the, it has conflicts with the hillside ordinance. Um, there's quite a few other ones that are conflicting with our ordinances that we already have. And so, um, do you have any suggestions on how you want to kind of create this master road, proposed roads? Um, do you want to break it up again? I know that they did that at one time, your last... It fizzled. Yeah. Um, I don't know...
I think I'm, I'm just...
Still there.
On the board.
Yeah.
I would say, let's have them get, give us a...
A clean?
True map, a clean map. And then I think, I know it'd be great if each, one of us took a corner, but I think we need to sit down as a, as a commission and go over it first.
Okay.
Because I think each of us, well, I shouldn't say us, everybody, but each, each of us should know or should be able to be aware of what...
I know Chief had some issues with some of the roads because of fire, and it would be good to have him there.
It would be wonderful, yeah, and I think we should do that. So what I'll do is, I'll go down, I've got an audit, about three more hours, and then after that, I will run to the recorder's office, and I will see if they can send you a PDF file, or they can just send me. And I found that if you tell them that you're part of the town, they don't charge you, so it's kind of nice. But, um, I will do that, and then what we can do is, I'm hoping that if you can get that, and, um, can we do a work meeting 30 minutes before our planning commission meeting next week, next, uh, month? And I don't want to take a lot of time, there's no sense in having a meeting for a meeting, but I think we need to start with this.
Well, and, yeah, and this is, just to put us in the room here, we need to make, just commissioners, commissioners members, not, well, it isn't here, it's over here.
Okay.
That person who is.
Okay, it'll be a closed session then?
Can we do that?
Yeah, I think we can.
What's that?
Can we have a closed work session? No?
It's only the closed sessions or what? Personnel, uh, maybe you could add an executive, or...
Can we have an executive session?
Executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have an executive session, if you can put that on.
Otherwise, it's gonna take more than thirty minutes.
It would take more than thirty minutes. I know. I've, I've been the reason for everybody having them, but anyway, I think what we should...
I wasn't gonna say.
I know, well, you know, you've got to protect them.
And then where would we find our latest zoning map? Would that be down there also?
I, well, I, we've got to find out, no, it would just be something that you have here that's been adopted by the town.
Okay, so zoning.
Because that would be the next thing I'd like to see.
Yeah, we need that, very definitely.
Okay, so can you find the, the most recent adopted zoning map for us? So we definitely know that's adopted, so this is a good thing. So what I'll do is, I'll go ahead and go down there, grab it. Our, our next planning commission meeting, the only thing I really want to do for those 30 minutes is brainstorm on what we can do as a council and commissioners also to, um...
You've, you've got a public hearing?
We've got a public hearing.
On that one. I haven't filed it yet.
On this one?
On the...
Conditional use. Conditional use and, and a master road, don't we?
Yeah, it's a master road and zoning, yeah.
Then we'll have to table that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, it's, uh, it's rentals.
The rentals and signs.
Yeah, conditional use.
But I don't think it was this, was it?
Yeah.
No.
It was the road master?
Yeah, conditional use and sign each.
Yeah, the signs and conditional use.
Right, but I don't think it was the road master plan yet.
No.
No, 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 no.
Condition use for the...
I mean, if you want to hold those two, I haven't filed those yet, I mean, I...
We can have those two, but that won't, um, we're only gonna be doing our executive session for 30 minutes before, and then after that, we will, um, we'll discuss this. But I don't think we're gonna have any action item on it, because I think it's gonna take a couple months to get to what we, what we need to do. Right, so does anybody have any other suggestions or comments on how you want to organize it once we get a clean slated map? Do you want to divide it in, or do you want to take each place, each parcel with every one of us and, and do it that way?
Doesn't seem to be that much.
No, it doesn't.
No, it does.
I mean, Russ, Russ, so you've heard Danielle. I mean, you know, I think that, I think the biggest issue we had, I think that a few of us had, is, is on private property. It's proposed road on a private property, on private property. That's our biggest issue.
Through, through the public hearing process, stuff like that, too, but the one thing I, I guess I want to emphasize, that the, I mean, really, you've got to, you've got to base your roads, the size of the roads, how many the roads, you've got to base that off of some supporting data, which is generally... And I, honestly, we've, we've given a couple proposals to the town to do a road master plan. I know they're, I think they're a little bit more than, than the town wants to spend on it, but I don't know. I ju, I guess I'm just concerned about the approach of, you know, we can put these here without the, without the data to back it up.
Well, this is what happened here. There is no data to back this up right now. So how much is it to do a master road plan?
Well, we gave, we gave a proposal.
Fifteen thousand.
Okay, well, that's...
Three thousand.
Yeah, we gave, well, we gave a original proposal. It was 12,4, it was 12,400. It was really the absolute minimum.
So what can we do to reduce that? What, what research can we do if we use you guys and do it?
Well, let me give you this. Honestly, I think this, we tried to squeeze down the scope as much as we could when we gave this, this proposal the first time, but that kind of takes you through the steps that need to be done in order to do it. You start, you start with the, basically, the zoning and the land use, and then you break it down into areas, and then there's, there's a trip generation.
Well, half of this has already been done. We, the town's already paid for this through Grapevine.
What, what have they paid for? You've got the, the GIS mapping of the existing plan, so we've got to, we've got to put that in an electronic format with the zoning. So we need to know what exactly zoning is, and we just need to get it into an electronic format. Then you break it up into zones, and you basically, it's essentially modeling to figure out how many, uh, trips you're gonna come up with per day in the different areas.
The only great one we've been over, let's see, on, on backwards here, is this area here.
No?
None of this area.
Well, yeah, but they did the tr, the trips.
The trips, yeah.
All they did, all they did, yeah, they just, and they, and they didn't, they did Main Street as it is, and they did their...
They thought he missed the Main Street, but they did take in the building, lots here, through the suburbs here, so, you know.
Okay.
So anyway, and then, uh, so you, you model and figure out the number of trips in each area, and then based on that is where you come up with, we need this much roadway capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of the basis for it, and, and I don't know, maybe we could just provide that information to you and, and let you take that and come up with something. I, I'm not trying to...
No, I understand, it's...
The other thing we could do, I mean, we, if you guys want to, to go after it yourself, and just kind of do some, some planning, this is kind of the idea that we have, we can do that, we just can't, I don't know that we can call it a master plan.
Well, how can this be called a master plan then? I'm just asking.
Who, who made that?
This is a map, this is, this is just a map that we made based off of these.
Sunrise made the sunrise.
Some, what is this name?
This is your...
So this is just...
This is the ten seconds.
That is...
And there was a second one for three.
So this one's showing the bare metal.
It's right there.
This was done by, uh, let's see, Del Barnes, Dave Harper, Frank Lloydko, Jared West, uh, the TruGee Law. This one was created by this, and it wasn't, I think Sunrise printed this, but they didn't create this.
Oh, correct.
And so, um...
Well, they didn't, well, they didn't necessarily create it. They just voted on it.
Right.
Wherever, where...
It doesn't say the planning commission, so that's kind of...
No, because, because they're the governing bodies.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this is, they just voted on it. That doesn't mean they had, you know, they looked at it, doesn't mean they did anything on it.
Okay.
They could have, but...
No, one other thing, on this map, do you have the Leeds, um, can you put the Leeds, uh, boundaries on it?
Is that what this white line here is?
Yeah, that's the white line?
That's the present.
Okay, so what is your, um, take on the town putting roads through the county? Is that legal?
You, uh, you know, I know that there's some dealim area out here, you need a decent for that, through the county.
We have not, one here, one here.
Well, there's some hill down here, but...
All of this right here is not part of the town? All of this isn't part of the town, neither is this.
Or it's a county road. I mean, it could be a county road as well. It doesn't necessarily have to be, of course, doesn't necessarily have to belong to the town. It can be a...
Well, and it's, it's called a proposed road through the county, so we, as a town, can do that? We can propose roads through somebody else's property?
I think there's got to be some, some regional planning, that there's, I mean, there's roads through the county all over the place, you know, but...
Proposed?
You know, I don't, I, I might have to look into finding out what the correct process or correct channel is to do that, but...
Yeah, let's go with that. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true.
I just wonder something, no, I don't suppose no place can live here, but this road here, coming down off the mountain, uh, that's gonna go right through a house.
It is.
Couple, a couple of houses right there.
Yeah, they, they've, they've redone this here, that's...
Now, there's a city road, this, this one right here, Mulberry, is a city road, it goes right up to the end, up here. Hornells, Zion West, made sure, you know, made, made sure this road was...
Was there?
Was up, up to the end of the, you know, up to the bottom of the hill.
Well, I think when Sunrise...
I just found them at my box.
Kind of covered them. What Sunrise did this, the map they got from was lots more.
Yeah, we, we did.
Probably would have connected it, I guess, if they had known.
Yeah.
All we, all we did...
All you did, all you did was...
All we did is take that map and...
Whatever everybody drew, whatever everybody drew.
Try to get a kind of map that was more noticeable, is all we did.
Right, that's all you did, you know, you didn't...
Well, actually, that's what here, they moved over to Mulberry.
Right, or something like that.
Yeah, Mulberry goes, you know, it's a, it's a city road, a common road, goes right up to the base of the hill.
Okay, well, we have three minutes, and then we're done. Um, is there anything else that you guys want to discuss before we get these? What I'm hoping you can do is, give us the map, and I'm gonna go ahead and email it to everyone, and it will just be a flat map. And then if you guys want to draw something on it, print it out, draw on it, and then bring it to that work session, um, what is the date of our next...
Third.
The third of April?
April third.
I think we all need a copy of this, so we can kind of study it.
Okay.
How much you copy like this?
Oh, I, we just, we just printed this out. It's the time to, it's just time to put the map together as well.
You don't want to bankrupt us.
No, I mean, just so we've got a copy of this to go with yellow, because this is more detailed on...
Yeah, we'll just print it. We'll just, I mean, if you have a...
See.
Yes, put the map together, we'll just print it out for you.
If I go ahead and get that PDF file, maybe what I'll do is come pick them up from your office, and I'll distribute them to everybody. And then you can have the big map ready to go for our meeting. Does that sound okay?
Just, just to clarify, I mean, if you guys, if you guys want to move forward with the approach that you are, we'd be happy to put a map together. We just won't call it a master plan map or anything like that, or we'll, we'll say this is a proposed future roads map or something like that. And then you guys can take that map and do whatever you want with it.
Yeah, that's all this is anyway.
As a, as a municipality, you can take that and do what you want, but it's just that maybe some liability there if there's not the, the data to back up the direction.
Well, and they're just proposed. They're not, I mean, we legally, as a, as a commission, as a planning commission, we can't put the roads in anyway. It's up to them anyway, so we're just doing, um, yeah, so, okay.
Would we want to, would we want to, you, you had mentioned the, the back, the reason for the road.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, for instance, the reason for this one coming up here, and, and why we have this over here, you could do it from there, or something like that.
Yeah, I think what the, I think what I'd like to see is, when I email you that, or if I can get that, and you can still work on it, um, I'd like to see one color on here of every single road as a dedicated road. And then from there, we can kind of go through, and maybe have some disclaimer that says, um, you know, a lot of these, like, Don Goddard's road right here, that says that it's actually a minor arterial, that has never been dedicated, and that's his driveway.
That's right.
And so, those are some of the things I think we need to mediate right now, because, um, you know, somebody can come in and say, "Well, it says proposed road, and I want to put it through your house," and so...
But you need a, a map of the dedicated road.
Right.
That, that you need to start with.
Okay. Does that sound okay to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, well, I will go ahead and motion, or not motion, I will ask for a motion to, unless there's any other discussion?
Oh, make a motion to...
Oh, just one thing. Can we talk a little about, uh, this, this gentleman's property up on, uh, up on the hill in, in Hidden Valley?
Uh, you mean the 26 acres, or?
Yeah, yeah, 26, or, we didn't, we didn't log that part, or, so, yeah.
You mean the area that they want to do into three different things? Okay.
Um, can we do that, or we...
I don't know. I guess we can, let's do it. It's just comments, so we're not deciding anything, so...
Yeah, I, I just wanted, that's a pretty nice piece of property now, and it, too, he wants to split that into three, uh, lots, um, two acre lots, and then each one has to be on a frontage road.
That's...
I don't know, that might be a problem.
That's a problem, because you have...
For that guy. Now, he's been, uh, now, there's, the guy, I'm not sure who owns it.
I think all, all of his could come into this road right here.
Yeah, it can.
Yeah, there's a road here, but there, there, his property, there, doesn't come down to this road.
Okay.
The, the gentleman that owns this property has offered to sell that to him.
Okay.
So...
It doesn't come down to this curving road here?
No, it doesn't. His property doesn't. There's, there's another piece of property in there that's maybe 100 feet deep or something like that, so he owns...
So at this point, he's landlocked?
Only by a certain amount of...
No, this, this road here is the only one that's...
He's got, he's got one road there. If he, I mean, if he wanted to be expensed to do this, he can put his own road in, as long as it meets the standard.
Right, right, and he can also do this.
Well, this, this other gentleman's offered to selling this property here, so that would, that would give him the, the, uh, other water pump, but...
Do you have, Darrell, do you not have any idea how long of that particular road you need for each, because he could go like this.
Right.
And he'd still be part of it.
He has to have two acres of billable... He, he has to have two acres of billable acreage.
Right.
But how much fundage does he need?
That's what I mean.
I'm trying to think of the frontage now, you know, in the ordinance, I was reading, you know.
Would you take this over for us?
You'd only need twenty, twenty-five feet.
Can you be the, kind of the liaison between town council and, or town council, the planning commission and this gentleman, and you take that on, and do the research for me?
To see if you can buy that?
Well, no, just to see what the width is on your frontage road.
Especially if you've got, you're going in there.
I was just dealing with a flag lot up here that only had a twelve foot, but then they have, there was...
Well, that's a pretty rocky piece there, too.
There's a lot of rocks there, and he plans on, you know, he can move the rocks around for his, his foundation, like, a lot of points.
He's got, he's got a lot of stuff to do before you even...
Oh, yeah, but I'll tell you what, that is a nice piece of property up there, that is, that is, that is a beautiful piece, piece of property.
Won't be when they start ripping the hillside again.
Well, the other side of the road is looking pretty.
I didn't realize there was that one, I've been up to that water thing before, but I never really looked over.
Well, Darrell, if it's okay with you, what we'll do is, if there's questions on that, we'll just go ahead and have them call you, is that okay? And then you can do the research for us.
Okay.
That be okay, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
If that's illegal for us, it is.
Yeah, I, no, I, I think...
One more, one more quick idea. I've asked on the, on the agenda, on the agenda item at the next meeting, that, that we look at a time when we have, when we, so we hold our meetings, and the date that we hold our meetings, okay, meaning, I, I'd like to see us double up, because we've got a lot of stuff to do.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see, like, for the next three months, every two weeks for us to have a meeting.
Wednesday.
Yeah, and I know that may be difficult for you, though, but...
We'll keep them short.
There's, you know, I mean, it, yeah, it'll be really short meetings, 'cause, but...
If, if you'll keep it to the next three months, that's probably good with that, and if it's from here, from here on out.
That's all, that's all, I'm gonna, I just want us to be on, yes, to think about it, but we're gonna talk about it in the next month or year.
Oh, okay.
Town council's going, moving ours to six.
Yeah, we under, we understand that, but...
Do you have a call if you wanna vote on it now?
Um, no, it's gonna be on the agenda at the next meeting, we'll discuss it, then we'll, we'll, we'll do it.
Cause we're at a work meeting before that come now, is it?
I say, we're having a work meeting before that one, is it?
I have one question, is, is it, if we don't wanna be filmed?
It'll be a work meeting.
Is it legal to film in here?
It's a public meeting.
So they can film right at us? Okay.
I wish, I wish they could. As a matter of adjustments, they had a, a session, and she banned it, and it was, it was, what do you call it, burning head. She were questioned, and, and the lawyer come up with a view, and I, you know.
Just, just remember, we're in advisory.
Right.
We have, we have no power at all, so we just do what we think is correct, and we send it out to the council, and they can change it any way they want.
I mean, I don't like cameras either, but I think it actually, in some instances, it'll stay where they can force them to purchase.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the, the reason we're filming, it's not currently required, but the state is moving in that direction to work off of the whole...
Well, I might have been hearing, I watched, this was back in two thousand and four, five, six.
So I, I move we close?
Second, that?
All right, all in favor?
Who gave a second?